Good evening, everybody. We'll take like thirty seconds and we'll get started. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one Gilbert Town Council meeting. Sorry, we're starting a few minutes late. We were in a meeting upstairs and then I had some wonderful Girl Scouts to meet down there in the front row. So I needed to take a couple of minutes to do that. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and these mics are sounding good tonight. Call this meeting to order and we will do the invocation and invite Pastor Eric Jones down for the invocation. Could you hear me? Sorry, Pastor Eric Jones, the mics are doing something weird. Sorry.
All right. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for, first of all, for all that you do. Really appreciate you. We live in an amazing community and it's not by accident because of good leadership. So thank you very much and thank you for the honor of being able to bring the invocation, especially on this special week. We're almost midweek in the Passion Week. Looking forward to celebrating Good Friday and the work of Christ on the cross and, of course, Easter Sunday, the resurrection of Jesus. And so basically with that backdrop and from that perspective, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for your son, Jesus. We thank you for so loving us, this broken, really messed up world that you would send your only son to rescue us. Jesus, thank you for coming and thank you for giving us life and that to the full. Lord, I ask that you would minister to the hopeless in our community, Lord, and bring them hope. Lord, where there are those who are restless and don't have peace, God, that you would, you would bring them that peace. God, where there are those who feel so isolated, especially after this past year of the pandemic and isolation, God, that you would, you would come and that you would, God, you would restore their soul. Bring back joy and purpose and reignite relationships, Lord. Where there are those who are depressed, God, that, that you would bring that hope, we pray in Jesus' name. God, where there are those in our community who are weak, who are vulnerable, Lord, bring protection and strength. God, we thank you that we can pray these things. Lord, I ask your blessing upon this council, upon our mayor, upon all that they do. I pray blessings over their families. I pray for all of those in our community, especially those first responders who are putting their lives on the line, day in and day out. I pray for their protection. And, Lord, I pray for revival in our community, that we might be those people who are walking in the light and in the joy of the Lord. And we pray this all in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Eric. We always appreciate you coming out and serving to do our invocation here in the council chambers. And I look forward to seeing you later on this week for your service. Next, we will have our Girl Scouts that I just mentioned come down to the front of the room and council member September, if you would go down and join them, please.
Hello? Everybody can hear me through the mask? Great. Welcome, everybody. This is my first time doing this since COVID. We haven't, we haven't had this opportunity and I'm glad to be doing this. Is it your first time as well, Girl Scouts? Wonderful. So here we have Gilbert Troop number thirty-six eighty. It's going to help us with the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. Before you sit down, can you guys introduce yourselves?
I'm Addison from Troop Thirty-Six Eighty.
I'm Sophia from Troop Thirty-Six Eighty.
I'm Natalie from Troop Thirty-Six Eighty.
Well, thank you very much for coming down and helping us tonight. We have these pocket constitutions for you. These are very important. Please read them before you go to bed tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, girls. Thank you, Stacia, for bringing your troop in this evening and we appreciate you coming down to Town Hall. Our newer council members have not had the opportunity to experience many of the things that we've done over the years here in the council chambers because they're new and they came on new during COVID. So everything's been different for them. And I appreciate them just picking up and being able to take the ball and run with it. We do not have any proclamations this evening, so I will look to my vice mayor for communications from citizens.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. We'll take communications from citizens. We have nine individuals requesting to speak tonight. And each individual will have two minutes. This is the opportunity to identify for the town matters of interest or concern related to the town government that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provisions of Arizona Open Meeting Law, we are prohibited from responding to your comments aside from responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented on, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda.
Vice Mayor, could I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Clerk, Ms. Chevelli, could you please do the roll call? I'm all out of order tonight.
Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here, I think.
Vice Mayor Jan Kaprowski. Here. Vice, oh, I'm sorry, council member Scott Anderson.
Here.
Council member Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Council member Scott September. Council member Kathy Tilke.
Here.
Council member Amy Yentis.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. When I, when I call your name, please come forward to the podium. Please state your name and place of residence and then you can begin speaking. We do expect you to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. That includes no clapping and shouting. Personal attacks, political speeches, or threats are inappropriate in this forum and will be grounds of the discretion of mayor to end the speaker's time at the podium. We will begin with Kristi Kuhn.
Hi, my name is Kristi Kuhn. I have lived in the town of Gilbert since I was six years old, right by Burke Elementary School. Well, what I want to say is, please do not take our barn or our back wall and gate that it's attached to. It'll be much more harder for us to get higly feed to our horses in the very, very back of our property. And we've been living in our own property since I was a very little girl of six years of age. And we've lived in the house since nineteen ninety-five. And now it's two thousand and twenty-one and I am hearing sad news that this property is going to be taken from us with no fair, let's see, no fair governing of all of our choices or anything. I mean, it'd be really sad to be, if they take our barn away from us, then we can't take care of our animals, such as our horses and our chickens. And I've been riding horses since I was six or seven years old with my mom and dad. And it's really, really, really nice to have a property in our backyard, to have horses and chickens and just to live a life of exercise and been really good therapy for me. I have a little bit of Asperger's and it's been really nice therapy for me to ride horses and take care of the chickens every single day, morning and night. And riding with my mom is a blessing in my life to have. And we will ride to the, through the, through the canal and to Freestone Park. And what would we see at the stoplight are these signs about transportation? And my mom is complaining that the signs are too, what's it called? Too square and very sharp. Yeah, they're sharp signs and they need to be minimal, rounded, rounded to a minimum so that doesn't hurt anybody trying to pass through. And it's been really, really nice exercise just to go through Freestone Park on our horses. And we even go down to Greenfield and maybe one time visit my relatives and live in Greenfield on my horse.
Thank you for your comments, Kristi. Our next speaker will be Debbie Kuhn.
Hi, I'm Debbie Kuhn. I want to thank you for listening to us again. And you just met my daughter, Kristi. She's a real blessing to us. And I can tell you that the horses have been amazing therapy for her and for me. She's come back from a real mental illness and I believe the horses were a big part of that. Also, she is now driving a car and I don't think that would have been possible had she not had horses to ride. I have grandchildren that are also coming up that are looking forward to start riding. And I just have many years ahead still and hopes and dreams. Also, I thought that, well, see, we were told when we bought our property that it was grandfathered as an acre horse property lot. And that there wasn't anything that would change that, being grandfathered. At this point, I'm not sure what grandfathered means. I was told that it would be able to stay intact no matter what, they said. So not sure what grandfathered means anymore. And if someone could explain that to me and clarify that. I always thought I was safe, that we were safe. She said something about those, I'll just throw in the signs, that they're very sharp and need to be rounded. Somebody wasn't thinking that it's very close to the stoplight where we need to push the light to go. If the horse is back up just one foot, they'll get impaled by a sign, so. Also, please like you to reconsider. This eminent domain doesn't make any sense to me at all. No sense at all. We've, we've all been talking as neighbors. We'll allow you to come in, take care of things that you need to take care of. And I, the last time I was here, the guy was looking at three hundred, you know, three hundred years from now, he mentioned, well, that, I developed that property. I built that house there. Three hundred years, I won't be here and that, it, it, I don't know if anyone's going to still be here. But I just would like to, to ask you to reconsider something that doesn't need to be done. And then there's a new sign at Lindsay that shows a golf cart, walkers, maybe joggers, bikes. It's a new sign, giving a name to our trail. I wasn't sure what that motorized vehicle was. But that's very concerning to me to have motorized, especially along an exercise trail where we can finally get away from the street, from the noise, from the exhaust fumes. And so I don't know what your plans are there, but they seem pretty big. All being connected to the timing wise of wanting to take twenty-three or so feet into my property, that's not counting the footage. Just coming into the middle of my barn and taking, trying to take my barn. It's caused a lot of stress on all of us, my neighbors. We're all under some stress right now. And so I just, I'm going to hope and pray that you guys will re, please reconsider something that doesn't have to be done. It really doesn't. I've looked at it all, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Kuhn.
Thank you, council. I, I think that my daughter and my wife forgot to mention, this is WW ten sixty we're talking about, between Gilbert Road and, and, and the Freestone Park. So like I said, you've seen all of our neighbors here. We're very concerned about this, this situation. And I just, I'm just concerned and I just hope each one of you can understand how we have lived here for a long time. We, we love Gilbert. We love our acre, almost an acre. But we just love our, our homes and property and we certainly don't want it taken away. So thank you very much.
Next speaker is Char Hawkins. Char, I'm sorry.
My name is Char Hawkins and I live on Commerce Avenue and my residence is personally affected by the ten sixty sewer rehabilitation project. I really didn't want to say anything tonight. I feel like everything, we've been coming since January to every town council meeting and we have said everything that you, you know everything. But we kind of have a neighborhood theme thing going on. If you haven't noticed, our T-shirts we have made that say, "Stop wasting taxpayer dollars." So in keeping with our neighborhood theme tonight, I just thought I would share with you a little research that I did on the Big League Dreams of Gilbert. Gilbert spent forty-two million on Big League Dreams facility in two thousand and eight. And again, these are details that you already know about. I'm sharing it because maybe my neighbors don't know it. Maybe the people that are residents of Gilbert watching virtually don't know some of these bullet points that I'm sharing. So Gilbert spent forty-two million on Big League Dreams facility in two thousand and eight. The estimated cost from Big League Dreams Sports Parks Chief Operating Officer Jeff Oderkirk was around twenty-three million. Another Big League Dream Park was built in Mansfield, Texas at the same time as our Gilbert Park and with the same amenities as our Gilbert Park for twenty-four point six million. A difference of about fifteen to sixteen million. That's a pretty big difference. Gilbert sued builder M.A. Mortenson allegedly faulty, alleging faulty construction in two thousand and thirteen. Mortenson settled with the town for thirteen point five million. Those funds are what paid for most of the fifteen point four million in renovations. The town abruptly closed the facility in two thousand and seventeen and said the private operator, Big League Dreams Gilbert, hadn't properly maintained the venue. Meanwhile, the town is now operating the venue named Cactus Yards, estimating its annual net loss at about one point one million. Some town leaders have balked at the expense while others point out that parks are community amenities and not just money makers. This is just one example of wasting taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Next speaker is Nolan Baldwin.
And town council members, thank you for letting me take some time today. We missed you two weeks ago, missed coming down here and being able to visit. In November, council approved buying property for WW ten sixty from each of us homeowners that are here and about that many more. At that time, there was not one question asked about the cost of buying property, building fences, changing, hauling off trees, hauling in dirt to make it level, building walls, building temporary fences. There was not one question from the town council about those costs. It was just approved. Now here it is nearly April first and the answer is, what I've got from the town council, what I've kind of condensed, is we need to do appraisals and we need to see what the costs are going to be before we can determine what direction we're going. We've been doing this for over three months, trying to get someone to see that this sewer can be fixed without taking our property. We're getting tired of feeling like we're just talking and nobody's listening, nobody's responding and nobody's taking leadership and giving us any direction changes. In fact, today I talked to an appraiser who met with one of the homeowners and he said he knew me. I called him up today. He said, yes, there was a little bit of a stall, but they've been asked to go ahead and do the appraisals. And the letter that one of my neighbors received this week said, yes, work out the price with someone representing the town of Gilbert. Until we see that something has changed and that the town council has asked that our land be saved and they could figure out how to fix it without taking our land, we will be stepping up the game, not just showing up here. We have rally planned. We have a website planned to show such things as Mrs. Hawkins mentioned about where the town has wasted dollars in the past. We're going to do a media blitz, press releases, a website, get as many people as we can to use Facebook and Instagram and do everything we can to get where the public opinion is understanding what is going on here. We appreciate your time and we'd love to have someone say, we will not take your land. We'll find a way to fix it without it. When that happens, we'd be happy to quit taking your time and coming down here every other week. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Zain and Arum Hamid.
My name is Zain. I was born in Gilbert and I am here today to speak to Gilbert leadership about WW ten sixty. Town leaders are not listening to the twenty-four homeowners. I love my backyard. I would, we have big plans to do for our backyard and we would really appreciate if you guys did not take our land away from us and would fix the sewer without taking our land. I appreciate all your time and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Zain. Our next speaker will be Omar and Arum Hamids.
Well, good to see you all. We missed you two weeks ago. My son preceded me, so I don't think I can match his auditory abilities. But I'll be a little more blunt, maybe not as elegant as he is. So I sent this option, this email to all of you a couple of weeks ago. And obviously I've not heard from Mr. Montgomery or Mr. Fabiano. But just wanted to ask again, why was option C decided by town engineers and managers without any public hearing or community feedback? Question number two, why was option C quickly passed through the town council without any discussion or explanation of the impact to the twenty-four homeowners in the town council? Now, unlike in the past, I'm going to leave with a call to action today. So my, here's my call to action and I implore all of you to take a look at it. I would like to see the town council, or we would like to see the town council, pass a resolution that land purchase option is off the table. That will end this issue tomorrow. And my next call to action, be a little unpopular, but I'm going to go ahead and say it because I feel that Mayor Peterson is very honest, candid and listening to us. I think just like we have a new mayor and new leadership, maybe we need a new town manager, someone who actually speaks to the public citizens and rather than just interact with the public official or with the town officials. And maybe we need a whole new leadership in, in the town, starting with the town manager. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Leslie Novak.
Good evening and thank you so much for allowing us to come in and speak yet again. So in, in researching, I'm also here as a Gilbert resident. I live on Hemlock and I'm also talking about the sewer project. But in researching this, the amount of money that was offered per square foot, we've talked to everybody that we can think of. And a real estate agent in Denver informed me that currently in Denver, Colorado, the price for unoccupied land is two hundred and eighty dollars per square foot. Now compare the two hundred and eighty dollars per square foot to the ten dollars per square foot that my neighbors and myself have received from the city. Denver is not one of the fastest growing cities in the country like Gilbert is. Denver is not listed as one of the safest cities to live in that Gilbert is. Yet this council, by their vote, has reduced its citizens, who are here again tonight, to feel like their investment of prime downtown Gilbert property is worth less than the slums of Denver. My question is, why is that? Contrary to the opinions of your very well-paid consulting company, I and my neighbors know very well what we have invested our time, money, heart, and soul in. We are here again to ask one of you council members to do the courageous thing and ask for a complete halt of the WW ten sixty project so that more wisdom is gained before asking this council to vote again on this project. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Tom Patterson.
Hello, my name is Tom Patterson. I live at two four one East Hemlock Avenue. When I first moved in, our fence was old and falling down and about twenty feet closer than it is now. It was mentioned by my real estate agent in the city later on that we could extend our walls to the full property borderline as long as we have an easement gate, which we provided. About a month ago, in answer to one of our questions, I forget who it was, but they said that we are encroaching upon city land. But we are not encroaching on city land when everyone says that it is ours. You could go on the web, any website, Zillow or Redfin and look up my lot size and it says nine thousand two hundred square feet. Not seven thousand or six thousand. Also, my daughter has been wanting to say that we have dogs, so you can't take our backyard. We need it to play fetch. And I want to play, you know, catch with her when she's older. Why is the most expensive option of the three, the one that was chosen? The reason you've given us for, for that is that replacing the back wall is too expensive. You have to build that back wall again three times. But we are willing to work with you on that expense and help. But we are willing to work with you on that expense and help. So we once again ask for more consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our communication from citizens and we'll move to the consent calendar. Councilmember Yentes has asked to have discussion on items 12, 14, and 19. Are there any other items to pull for discussion? All right, hearing none. I ask for a motion to approve items 1 through 11, 13, 15 through 18, and 20. So moved.
Second.
Please vote. We have a missing button. That motion passes. We'll move to discuss item 12. Councilmember Yentes?
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I pulled this item. I'm supportive of it. I understand the need to balance these environmental service funds. I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, this is obviously preceding, you know, further action on a rate study to potentially increase these rates. And so I just wanted to put that out there as far as public information because I do think that if we're going to continue to do our due diligence and investigate that as an option, we should also continue to do some further research on possible tax reductions as we increase service fees in other areas. And so I'm supportive of this tonight. Understand we need to have solvency in our funds and so I just wanted to make that comment.
Other discussion? All right. May I have a motion to approve item 12?
Motion to approve item 12. I'll second.
Please vote. Motion passes. We'll move to discuss item 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want permission to vote separately on this. I wasn't supportive of, obviously, dispensing with our private ambulance provider. Believe that that was the most cost-effective way to do it for taxpayers. It pays for itself and I do believe that we got good service and so just permission to vote separately on this.
I do have a quick question. Maybe this would be Patrick, somebody else. What is our contingency if we don't collect enough funds over the period of time to pay back the loan for this?
Mayor Peterson, Councilmember Anderson. So we set the fund up to be self-sustaining and we would need an original amount of money to cover the purchase of the ambulances. And our current projections show us recouping this initial loan to the fund within the time period that we mentioned. If anything should change, we will continue to monitor that and come back to the council with any necessary changes to it. But we feel confident in the projections we've put together on that.
Thank you.
And to that point, I believe that term was around eight years.
Any further discussion? All right. May I have a motion to approve item 14?
So moved.
I'll make a second.
Please vote. Motion passes, 5-2. Move to item 19, human resources.
Thank you for your indulgence again, Mayor. I am supportive of the portion of this item that is the 3% increase in the premiums. I understand, you know, the costs and, you know, the claims that have led to, we're self-funded, so requiring us to make sure we're balancing our funds. The provision that I'm not supportive of is the expansion of benefits to include gender-affirming surgery. I think those are policies that deviate from others' positions we've taken as a community that delve more into social policy rather than strictly providing medical necessary benefits to our employees. And so I don't know if there's a way we can bifurcate these two and vote on those separately, but I would like to vote on the increase to the premiums without having to support the other expansion of the benefits.
Could staff provide some additional context for this item, please? Do we want Kristin Drew to comment on this or is this more of a Chris Payne question? If we, Councilmember Yentes is asking if we could split item number 19 into two separate votes, one that would be for the cost increase for the 3% increase and to vote separately on the additions to the plan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You could make a motion, a motion to approve this item excluding whatever item additional plan coverages that are proposed in here. So it could be a motion to approve except for gender-affirming surgery, if that's what the motion was.
Thank you. Any other discussion about this item? Does anybody need Kristin Drew? She's prepared with a couple of slides if anybody's interested. No?
No, I don't need to see the slides, but I share Councilmember Yentes' concerns.
I'd like to have the context brought to the public meeting. So a couple of slides from Kristin? Thank you, Vice Mayor. Kristin, please, thank you. I know you're well-prepared.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Kristin Drew, the Deputy Chief People Officer, and I appreciate a couple of moments to share some information with you. Over the years with our health fund, we occasionally do have to increase. Typically for us, that is about 2% to 3% and only as needed. Usually about every other, every couple of years, not annually. Comparatively, the national average is anywhere between 8% and 12% annually, so we are much lower than that. In addition, if our fund has a surplus, we will enact a premium holiday, which allows both the employees and the town to not contribute over certain pay periods. The primary factors in regards to the fiscal year '22 increase are specific to large claims. In addition, the pharmacy costs and comorbidities and stop-loss insurance fees related to those large claims is directly driving that 3% increase. This graph will show you over the past few years, if we compare what the town's contribution has been, which is the blue line, it increases slightly because of the increase in the membership on the plan, which is the trend line that you see. And then the red line is showing what the town would contribute if we were on the lower end of the national average. So just to give you some context on how the good decisions of the board and the council over the past few years have managed the town's costs in regards to the health fund. In addition, plan design recommendations happen every year. If you look at the past few years, in fiscal year '18, we changed our third-party administrator and our network and we added a banner select plan. In fiscal year '19, we added the autism spectrum disorder as well as ending the legacy plan and changing a few copays. In fiscal year '20, we added a CVS incentive, which also helps save both the member and the fund money. And then in fiscal year '21, we added domestic partner coverage as well as expanding acupuncture, chiropractic, and orthotics. Again, those were cost-saving measures, looking at the long run. Whenever we make plan designs, there's a valuation criteria that is considered. Sometimes it is a legal requirement. Other times it's industry standard. We always want to be competitive with the market. And then sometimes we need to make a structure change, which would be the copays or the deductibles. In any of these situations, we evaluate the impact to the fund, what is standard amongst our peers and the market, as well as advice from both our broker and our third-party administrator. Specifically, we've been looking at aligning with the Affordable Care Act, Section 1557. This is required by any fully insured plan and is pretty standard on most self-insured plans, including most of our peers. Those three items include the autism spectrum disorder, which we did add in fiscal year '19, gender-affirming surgery, which we would recommend for fiscal year '22, and then advanced reproductive technologies, which we are evaluating now. Again, going back to those criterias, we want to look at what options there are, what impacts would be to the fund, and we would anticipate bringing that, some type of recommendation around that option for fiscal year '23. And with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Any questions for Kristin? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up here. Thank you, Kristin, for that. I'll bring it back up here to the dais for discussion. Anyone like to make some comments on this item? Vice Mayor?
I would just like to comment that I will be voting yes on this item only to align our benefits with the industry standard and the Affordable Care Act because we are self-insured fund.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that I will be, that my opinions are similar to Councilmember Yentes on this issue as far as taxpayers paying for this item. That is, it's contrary to what we've typically done as a town to avoid these more social policy issues.
There's a question. Kristin, could I ask another question on this? Sorry to get you back up again. I'm just reading the information here and it refers to that it's recommended that we try to align with what fully insured plans offer. We're not required to offer these coverages because we're self-insured, but we're trying to compete with our peers, I guess other cities for employees and staffing. I don't know if you can answer this exactly, but I'm just curious. I don't know how many employees we hired last year or the last five years or you probably have a better feel for the applicants. How many applicants refuse to accept employment with the town of Gilbert because we didn't offer gender-affirming surgery? Is that a large number?
Councilmember Hendricks, thank you for the question. No, I'm not aware of anyone not accepting an offer based on that specific benefit.
Have you heard input or inquiries of people that said, "I refuse to apply at the town of Gilbert for any job because I wouldn't be able to get gender-affirming surgery if I accepted employment there."
I have not heard that, no, sir.
So the argument that's in our packet here that we're trying to compete with our peer organizations, we're just thinking that theoretically there might be a person someday that would only want to work for Gilbert if these procedures, and I'm just picking out one, there's others in here, these social programs or social treatments. We're thinking that someday there might be somebody that wanted this treatment and it may cost more than their salary for the time they worked for the town of Gilbert, but they might go to work for Chandler so they could get this treatment as opposed to working for Gilbert. And to be sure that we didn't lose that person if they ever came along, they never have, but if they ever did, we want to add this to our policy. There must be some cost. I mean, nothing's free. I know we've, there's been an indication there's no increase in the premium, but you certainly can't offer services for free unless, of course, if nobody ever requested the service and self-insured, we'd never pay for it. We'd never have a cost. But if somebody said, "I'd like to go work there because I'd like to have this in my insurance," I guess that could happen.
It could happen. Typically, when folks ask us about our benefits, we're able to say we are comparable to Chandler, Mesa, Tempe, Phoenix. So it typically doesn't come down to a specific benefit like that. We look at the whole and we try to align with what is standard in the market, not just based on one particular benefit.
Well, I guess we wouldn't be able to say we're comparable. We'd have to say we're comparable except we don't offer gender-affirming surgery. Otherwise, we're comparable. We'd have to disclose that, I guess, to everybody who applied for a job with Gilbert on the hopes that wouldn't cause them to say, "I don't want to take that job" because that's a key thing to be working there is that I can have this option or my family could have that option. I guess we'd have to disclose that. We may lose those or that employee if they ever happen to come along. I guess I can't support this. I'm going to vote no unless we can amend this.
Thank you, Councilmember Hendricks. Any other questions? Councilmember Anderson, did you have anything? No? No? Councilmember Tilke, no?
Thank you, Kristin, for the comments and explanation and speculation. I know sometimes it's hard to figure out if this will be something that will be required or requested in the future and we have employees with all kinds of backgrounds that work for us here at the town of Gilbert. And I know that it's important for us as an organization to try and be in the forefront when it comes to offering benefits to our employees or future employees. You can sit down, Kristin. Thank you, sorry. Like, wait, you're standing there looking right at me. You don't need to, you don't need to sit there, stand there, sorry. To keep us competitive within the marketplace, and I know that it seems like one item might not be the deal breaker today for one or two or three employees that are coming on to the town, but at some point, it might become an issue and will show that this community is forward-thinking. And there are times that we need to make the tough decisions that may not always align with our own thought process when it comes to our personal choices or our political choices or our religious choices even. But we put Gilbert in a position that provides for whatever the future may hold and because I know that other organizations and other businesses, my husband's included, he had to go look because I had this conversation with him at home. His company, which he swore up and down would not be offering gender-affirming surgery, actually does offer gender-affirming surgery and he was quite surprised by that. And I think in most cases, if any of us went back and looked at our plans, it's probably already included in what we receive. I'm going to encourage our councilmembers to be open-minded in this benefit and look to this community moving forward where we can be strong and handle situations like this that come forward in front and we're faced with. And I would appreciate, we can split the motion out if we'd like to make that easier for everyone. And I will go ahead and start that off by saying, I'll make a motion to increase the premiums by 3% as presented this evening by our staff.
Second? Motion and second, please vote. The increase passes by a 7-0 vote. I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the additions to the plan as presented by staff this evening. Second? Vice Mayor, was that you? Thank you. Motion by Peterson, second by Kaprowski. Please vote. And the motion fails for 3. Thank you for thinking it over. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. I assume that it'll probably go back to the Health Trust in the future for more discussion and potentially come back to the council at some point in time in the future. Thanks, Kristin. Mayor, that concludes the consent calendar. We'll move to the public hearing. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Great job on the consent agenda. Thank you for everybody for your thought and everything that you put into everything you do here on the dais. We'll now move into the public hearing portion of our agenda. We just have two items, 21 and 22. Did anyone want to discuss those items or are we good with a motion on those items this evening? I see nobody speaking up.
I'll move approval.
Oh, okay. Let me open the public hearing, close the public hearing and motion by Councilmember Anderson, second by Councilmember Tilke. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Now we'll move on to administrative items on our agenda. We have a presentation and discussion for the use categories of the American Rescue Plan Act and the funding we're getting from that. Who is doing that presentation?
Mayor, members of the council. It wasn't a presentation per se, just a recognition that Gilbert has been notified that we are receiving $24 million in the latest allocation from the act that you just mentioned and any direction from council would like to provide for staff in areas to look towards possible uses of the funds to bring back further council discussion and consideration for action.
Thank you, Patrick. Any comments from council? Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you.
In revealing some of the needs that we have within our community, I would like to get more information back on the dollar figures to, um, use these funds to build the advocacy center, repay the cost of the summer protest, and possibly look at the cost for the utilities that we had to write off throughout this time that maybe, um, ju, just to bring those funds back to where they should be.
Any other comments? I, I would like to, um, have a discussion about the advocacy center. I would love to not be able to have to include that in a bond item for later this year. And, um, I think these funds would be a perfect opportunity to use for that item. I'm seeing some nods up here, too, so.
I would agree with that. And if there's sufficient funding for the advocacy center and other items, I would also support, um, bringing forward evaluation for the police crime lab.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I honestly, I wish we could send this money back. Being in, in the unfortunate situation that we are with, you know, a windmill of pork dollars, um, you know, that'll surely be, you know, a tribute to gross amounts of inflation nationally. You know, we're in this position, so, um, you know, my preference would obvious, obviously be in any way possible. We can return any amount of money back to taxpayers, however we can legally devise that. I understand, uh, you know, the, the strings that they attach to the, to the relief funds as far as not providing tax relief with those funds. Obviously, there were similar provisions or stipulations on the initial tranche of CARES Act dollars, and it went to supplant operations and, um, you know, general operation funds for, uh, public safety so that we can meet those stipulations. It freed up general fund dollars to give us a lot more latitude on how to spend those monies. I don't know if we've done similar legal analysis. There's organizations all across the country, um, you know, uh, kind of splicing this and understanding, you know, what, what those provisions meant. So, um, that's not a specific recommendation through our subcommittee. I, I presented a number of things that I thought would be broad-based and a way to return taxpayers' dollars back, back to them as much as we possibly can. Obviously, you know, we're going to be asking the community to support additional funding, uh, bonding for other projects. And I understand the needs for some of those. But to, as much as possible, if there's any political desire to align with those goals, um, that would be my preference.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. Um, I, I often joke that I wish there was an opt-out button for the money that was coming from the federal government, even personally, if I could just hit opt-out. Any other comments? No? Patrick, did that give you some feedback? Thank you. I shot my mic off. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committees. Do I have any reports from council liaisons? Um, Councilmember Anderson, I think you do.
I do. Um, I think I s, sent to each of you a report from AMWA, the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. I hope you have time to read through that. It's, uh, very good to come back every once in a while and get a report from the organizations that we support financially through our dues. And I, I would report that AMWA is doing an excellent job for us in monitoring not only legislation concerning water, but also, uh, watching over, uh, what's happening in the water world here. I'm amazed every time that I attend any of their meetings, the amount of discussion and concern there is about water in the Southwest and how good we are at managing water here in the Southwest. But I know they're turning their attention a lot to, um, drought contingency plans. Remember that we're still in a, a drought. And that plan, I know the upper basin of the Colorado River just got recently hit with a huge snowstorm, and we are looking forward to the snowpack impacting our runoff this spring. But it turns out that even with that large snowfall, we're only at 80% of average runoff this year. So we're still, they're still thinking that we will have a, we will trigger a tier-one shortage on the Colorado River in January, which means there will be certain items that will take place to conserve water. And I think in tier-one, most of that affects, um, rural areas, agricultural areas, more so than the urban areas. But it's always wise to pay attention. And, uh, if you go through their report, I think you'll notice that they are paying very close attention to water issues that affect all the members of, uh, AMWA. One thing that's very important also to the valley is what they call safe yield, which means you're putting as much water back into the ground as you're pumping out of the ground. We're a little bit short on that in, uh, our management area here in the valley, but they're, they're working very hard to achieve that. And again, I think that shows how great at water management we are here in the desert Southwest. But I hope you have the opportunity to read that report. It's, uh, and if you're interested at some point, we can invite the executive director to come and give us a, an in-person report even. Thank you.
When we can actually do like joint meetings again, that would be nice. Thank you. Any other comments about boards, commissions, liaison positions? No? Great. Moving on, um, any policy items or future meetings? I don't see any. So communications, how about a report from our town manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's with great sadness that I tell you of the passing of a longtime Gilbert Parks and Recreation employee this morning, Dave Gossman. He's a 25-year employee with the Town of Gilbert's Parks and Rec Department. He was a park superintendent with us and beloved by his peers. And he will be greatly missed by everybody in his passion for cycling and trees. And if you often saw a Gilbert employee going around to our various parks planting trees, that was most likely Dave. But, um, keep his family in your thoughts and prayers and as well as his coworkers within the Parks and Recreation Department, who are greatly saddened by, by the loss of Dave. Lastly, I wanted to recognize Valerie, the Intergov team, and all the directors who took part in Student Government Day last week. It's always a wonderful experience for all of us. We enjoy seeing high school kids who have an interest in pursuing careers in the public sector and have an interest in local government. So I appreciate them taking the time out of their busy days. And Valerie did an excellent job coordinating all the activities for that day. But that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Any comments from, any, um, report from council on current events? Seeing none, then I will share my report. Thank you for mentioning Student Government Days, uh, day last week. Valerie, you did do an excellent job. Thank you for that. We only opened Student Government Day up to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee this year. Didn't open it up to all the high schools in Gilbert because of the COVID situation. Those students were just amazingly impressive. And, um, the conversations and discussions that they had throughout their day, I was just so impressed by. I wanted to just share that the Gilbert Feeding Families Food Drive was this past weekend, and preliminary results are that we collected 88 bins of food and over $7,500 in cash donations. And I would like to thank especially Melanie Dykstra, who's a team member here at the Town of Gilbert, and Fran Louder from Just Serve and the LDS Church for running the food drive, along with all of the churches in the community that were part of the food drive. I stopped out Saturday afternoon and visited a couple, and the people were just so amazing out at the different locations and collecting the food for our community and giving back and showing some Gilbert kindness. I also wanted to recognize our Parks Team and, um, sorry to hear about the passing of a member of our team and the Parks Recreation Board. The Arizona Baseball Chapter of the United States Specialty Sports Association recently completed voting for their 2020 annual awards. The awards are voted on by the coaches and players who competed during the 2020 USSA Youth Baseball season throughout Arizona. We're excited to learn and share for the second straight year that Gilbert's Cactus Yards was the winner of Outstanding Park of the Year Award. Cactus Yards received the highest score ever in the 15-year history of the award, with a 10 out of 10 beating our score of a 9.9 last year. The highest rating previously of any facility in Arizona was a 7.8. This is also the first time in the history of the award in which a facility has received the award in consecutive years. So again, thank you to the Parks Team and congratulations to them for that great work that they're doing out there. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.